Used and applied them to the different user groups to the best of my ability. They're not carved in stone because there are a little, too many variables here. If the Finance Department and the City Services Department keep increasing the number of users, maybe we'll get to like 92% build or 93% build, which would be outstanding. And then Mr. Wilson will be here telling you all about that. He'll tell you how much additional revenue was generated. But I think even to get to the 88% now and maybe 90% by the end of the year, that's where you want to be. That's where we should be. Because, keep in mind, I don't think I mentioned that we don't bill ourselves for the water we use. What the government itself uses, we don't bill. So, that's why you're always going to have a difference between what you pump and what you bill. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Luton.
Maggie, I want to understand an enterprise fund a little bit better.
Okay.
With your help. You show surpluses for the next four years. That is a profit then to the enterprise fund?
Well, we don't use the word profit, but in a business you would use that. And remember, that's what I'm trying to generate to cover capital projects that aren't listed in here as expenses.
So that money can be carried from year to year?
Oh, certainly. Well, let me go back a little bit. You recall, we use the term "fund balance." On the audits, we use the term "net assets." Essentially, it's the same thing. Think of it as your checkbook. You start out at the beginning of the year with a balance in your bank account, okay? You put deposits in and you write checks against it. Get to the end of the year, hopefully, you still have a balance in your account. It's the same thing here. So you start the year with available, let's call it a reserve. You always have available reserves. In fact, if you look at the second page of the spreadsheet, you'll see that net assets is, in the blue column, is almost $17 million. But most of those are the fixed assets. They're not cash, okay? When I give you reports, I always give you official numbers. If there's been a published report, it's too confusing for me to take out all the fixed assets and then tell you that the Water Fund basically had, you know, $300,000. That's not going to help. So, I do this so that I can calculate it systematically every year. But, yes, you can call it a surplus or you can call it a profit, but in this case, it's all that is available to pay for capital.
How do we know that the fund can't be robbed by another city project? Because we know that eventually, pipes and water mains have to be replaced. And at some point, there'll be a major area that'll require, say, a $10 million complete replacement of pipes in an area. How do we know that while we're accumulating this money, somebody doesn't go rob the Social Security?
Well, if you look at the financial statements that are periodically given to the council, and certainly if you read the audit report, you'll know.
We will know, but is there a way to put it into law? That it cannot be moved to another area? That it has to stay there?
Well...
For the ultimate purpose of capital improvement?
Well, I think what you're talking about is designating. Occasionally, in certain funds, particularly the General Fund, the city council could take an action and designate a certain amount of money for a certain thing. And what that would do is act as a restriction on net assets. But in this case, there's no need to do that. The city keeps separate bank accounts for the utility fund, and all of the monies are accounted for separately. So, there is no, there's no way that could be done without, it would take collusion on the part of a lot of people, including your external auditors, to do it. And I can't imagine why they would, what that would accomplish, because...
Somebody wants a street project, and they want to pull money for the street project.
Oh, no, well, but, but see, the way the funds are kept, these are self-balancing funds, they're, I don't think anybody'd raid the utility fund. The only thing that I've ever seen done, and this is perfectly legal, is, as you know, the Water and Sewer Fund pays the General Fund an annual administration fee of $400,000. And that's to cover all the services that are performed by the staff of the city for the utility. And that's perfectly legitimate. And that number has been the same here, I think, for at least 10 years, if not longer. I have been, I have seen communities where that number creeps up every year. This year, it's 400, next it's 5, next it's 8, you know what I'm saying? So, that would be a way to siphon utility revenues off for another purpose. But that's not, that hasn't happened in Wood Dale, and it never will. And, you know, the fact that you look at the budget so carefully and you have every line item explained to you, it's even less likely for somebody to be able to do that. So, I guess this was a long answer to your question, but it is very unlikely that a utility fund run as lean as this fund has been to ever tempt someone to raid it. It just, it's not big enough.
Okay. My other, second question was about technology. The longer a pipe can stay in the ground, the less it costs to build up a fund to replace it, because it can be built up over more years. Do we have any, anyone, any department in the city assigned to the task of monitoring what technology would be the safest and longest-lived pipes to put in the ground? And I say that very honestly. All pipes that I know of right now need to be replaced sometime after 40 years. Regardless of how long out there, they all need to be replaced. In fact, I think we need some pipes replaced in this city that we'll need a capital fund for in the future. What, who's surveying the world of technology to know what's the right pipe to put in the next time?
Well, it's beyond my purview, but I will tell you this, that the, we do have very detailed asset records. So, we do know how old all the mains are when they were put in. And those are studied periodically, because you can, after you have a few breaks, you can pretty much anticipate where you might have further breaks. And you can start doing preventive things to either extend the life of that main or get it on the schedule for replacement. As far as materials, that's just beyond me. I think that's sort of an engineering question. But I know that the city manager and the former city services director were working on a schedule to try to show, and that's where they came up with the $1 million a year for water and a million of sewer. So, we would be doing scheduled replacement. As you said, your cutoff was 40 years. It's funny, the auditors will often say to me that they've never gotten a straight answer on how long a sewer or water main will last. It's anywhere from 40 to 80 years. That's basically it. And I will tell you, in Riverside, we had some wooden water mains. So, those were way, those were much older than 80 years. And that's just part of, that's just part of what the utility has to worry about on a regular basis. It's the same with the pumps. Any of the operating equipment, you know, you get a certain, you get a certain amount of warranty or useful life without doing much. But if you don't maintain things, then you're going to have loss of value and loss of function much sooner. And that's why this is important, that we keep this utility fund so that it can operate and function as it was intended, so that you don't end up with major failures that you can't pay for. Having said that, one other thing to keep in the back of your minds is that if a decision is ever reached about the wastewater treatment facilities, whether they need to be expanded or replaced or whatever, I know this council had talked about doing a bond issue. And we talked about, you know, the various costs of doing a bond issue and how long those bonds would be issued for. But if they were water and sewer revenue bonds, the Water Sewer Fund would have to show that it generated enough income not only to cover the debt service, but to keep a sinking fund or some sort of reserve. And so, you would not have been able to do water and sewer revenue bonds a few years ago. Water and Sewer Fund didn't have enough money to do anything. And so, that's what, if you look at this, for the current year that you're in, we're talking about a deficit of $180,000, which we know is only being caused by depreciation. So, that's not a cash expense. But going forward, at the end of 2013, I'm projecting that you could have a surplus of almost $2.1 million. Now, that's if you didn't do any capital. That's just in one year. And that's what needs to take place here. This fund has to get stronger every year. And if you decide to do it, you know, every other year, do the replacements, and that'll work, because there's money, there is money in the wastewater division and in the public utilities division, which is water, to handle maintenance, including some breaks. I mean, everybody knows that you've got to have some money in the budget for breaks. But this is, I'm talking about being systematic here, so that you don't end up with a shortage, have to go out and take advantage of some borrowing and see, as I said, I don't know who would, who would have loaned water sewer revenue bonds, who would have let you issue them, because the fund couldn't support of the debt service. So, that's why, that's why this rate situation has to be revisited every few years. And it is easier to just pass the ordinance, put it in place, so everybody knows what to expect. Instead of going back to the well every year, you know, the same discussions, the same thing, it's just, it's a waste of time. This makes more sense.
Thank you, Maggie.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Alderman Winger. Ms. Powers, about nine times out of 10, I'm going to agree with your proposals usually. This is probably the one out of 10 where I don't agree. And I'm not comfortable with the tiered scale. I feel it penalizes large families, that people with four to five, six people in that house, they're going to actually be paying more per 1,000 gallons than someone, a household of two people. So, I don't like the penalizing certain, you know, large families. And then also, however, I am in favor of doing at least a one tier, where if it's under 7,000 gallons used, that that household could pay a lower rate. So, at least it's only for the people that are using just very little, get a little break. So, but the multi-tiered, not in favor of that. Sewer, same thing, not in favor of a flat rate. I believe our citizens are accustomed to the parity between the two. And I think if we slapped on a 50, if I'm reading your chart right, $50 a month or so for just everyone across the board each year. Is that the way I'm supposed to read it per month?
Well, it would be, I think it was 53.21 for the, for a user of 10,000. And right now, that person would be paying 45.50 plus $2.60.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's real close.
Okay.
I mean, it's not, it's not a huge increase between, it'd be, all right, the difference between 53.21 and 49.70.
Well, my gut tells me that a household that gets the 53.21 in the '09, 2010 year per month, that only uses a little bit of water each month, I think our phone is going to be ringing off the hook, and they're going to be very displeased.
Well, if they used 7,000 gallons, the difference would probably be $5. So, it's not, it's not, it's not a big change. But what it does is, it doesn't, it purposely disconnects the water usage from the sewer charge because of this irrigation issue. Where water is being used for irrigation purposes, it does not impact the sanitary sewers in any way. It doesn't impact wastewater treatment. And the biggest costs we have in the sewer division are those costs.
Okay, so someone who uses 7,000 gallons in the '09, 2010 year would pay about, what, $48 instead of the 53.21?
Well, let me go. Get your calculator? Mr. Wilson will calculate that for us.
Okay.
Alderman Winger, we're talking about 7,000 gallons as opposed to 10, okay, using the new rates. What you said about the family of five?
I see what, okay.
If we were talking about a family of five, and we said they used 2,500 gallons a month?
Yeah.
Okay? We would only be talking about usage of 14,500, okay? So, their first 7,000 would be at the lowest rate. And their next 3,000 would be at the next tier, and it would only be 1,500 gallons.
I'm not comfortable with the concept itself to begin with. I'm a little more okay with the sewer, now that we're talking about what it would be versus what it is.
Mm-hmm.
But with the water, I'm not comfortable with the higher rate as usage goes up, just because there are, there's diversity among households. There's going to be people with a lot of people in their household, and then homes of one. And it's just not fair. The concept is no good, or at least that's my belief. It's not going to be favorable to our, to our people.
And then, would you prefer a commercial rate that would be completely different from residential? Because we have commercial users that use 150,000 gallons a month.
That's something we'd probably have to look at and look at what we do there.
And that, that has more to do, I think a lot of communities have a difference strictly because the wear and tear on the system is not even.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? When you have a large industrial complex using hundreds of thousands of gallons, that's a pretty big strain on the system. So, that's, that's why there usually is a difference. In Wood Dale, when I took a look at the consumption, I found out that there are some small businesses that actually use less than 10,000 gallons. There's a few that even use less than five, okay? Then there are some gigantic users. Talk about the two hotels, all kinds of usage. Because we have that diversity, that sort of dictated to me that there should be a couple of tiers. Because treating everybody the same didn't make a whole lot of sense. Because they are different types of users, and they do put different stresses and strains on the system. Maybe that's not true in every community. Maybe you would not find that much difference or differentiation. But here, we're kind of, kind of all over the map. And we do have lots of seniors, one or two-person households. And the average, according to the census, household size in Wood Dale is 2.74 people. That's the average. And, I mean, that's a number that came from the federal census. I didn't make that one up. So, I don't know how many families there are with five kids, but I don't think there are that many.
And I don't want to be responsible for penalizing those families, where there are large families in Wood Dale. And my last two comments, in terms of money coming from capital projects, I believe that a certain amount, I am comfortable with putting it in for sewer replacements. We went out for referendum. We said we need infrastructure help. So, if we use a portion every year, in my opinion, that's what we should be doing. And lastly, budgeting in 5% for salary increases, I think we need to be more realistic with the times and the economy. We should really look at 3% raises.
Just a reminder, though, we have union contracts that are higher than 5%. It just, I mean, just, just so the council keeps that in mind, these are multiple-year contracts. So, 5 is like, about as low as you should go in terms of, remember, these are assumptions. The only way to do this is to assume something rational. And good luck if you can keep it all to 5%.
If it's purely based on the union contracts and then keeping the other employees in step with that, then, you know, I can't argue too much.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's, when we did the budget, we used the same sort of assumptions. We always tell the council ahead of time what assumptions we're using for certain things. We have to, so that everybody's on the same page. And then, I had to keep the same assumptions throughout, because even though it appears that we're going to, we're getting into an inflationary period in the United States, it's difficult to tell now how quickly and how high that inflation rate is going to go. But it surely will be there. I don't think anybody expects that, even if gasoline prices were to fall, they're not going to fall dramatically. We already get a better deal on the gasoline for the city, because we buy it at a wholesale rate. So, you know, 10% increase was not out of the, out of the realm of possibility. And I hope that's all it is going to be, is 10% increase every year. Same with electric utilities, we don't know that. But we have to, we have to look at the past, and then we have to look at what's, what's going on currently, and then just try to do our best to project it out. It wouldn't do any good at all if I said, "I'll keep everything the same, and all I'm going to do is raise the rates." I could have made this look wonderful, you know? You'd have $4 million sitting there every year for capital, but that's not the way it works.
Alderman Chark.
Alderman Chark, go ahead, yes. Yeah, I'd like to mention that this all started when the mayor asked me to look into the Great Lakes water basin and what it meant to us. And I gave a little talk about that a while back, and as we predicted, the water rates are going up by 15% rather than the 3%, and so forth. But what really got it going was when we had that dry spell, and people were watering their lawns two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening, every second day, legally, more than that most of the time. And I found out from landscapers that that's not a good idea. That if you water just a small amount like that, the roots tend to come up to the top of the ground rather than going deep, and then when it dries out, they die. Whereas if you don't water the grass, and we have a dry spell, it turns brown for a while, but as soon as it rains again, it's green again. It comes back, because the roots are down deep. So, I began to talk to you about what we can do to conserve water because of that Great Lakes water basin idea. And what I kind of like about this, at first I didn't, to be honest with you, because I wanted somebody who's using 10,000 gallons to pay the 10,000 gallon price from day one, from the first 1,000. You're at least giving the first $7,000 at a lower cost, and only if they use more than that, will they be paying a higher price. I think that encourages people to look at water conservation, which we really need to do, about not leaving the water running when you're brushing your teeth, for instance, or walking away with the water faucet running. So that all they have to do is lower their usage by 800 gallons a month, and they wouldn't go into this next tier. They would stay within the 7,000 gallons a month and pay the lower price. I like the whole idea. I like the idea of having the tiers, so that those who don't conserve and who, in my estimation now, abuse the use of water, are going to pay more for it. It's only the right thing to do. You've modified it again by only having to pay when it's beyond a certain point, not from day one. I still almost would like to go back to that. This 2,700 gallons a month approximately, 2,500 gallons a month average, I think applies to a lot of people. To younger people like my granddaughter, it doesn't. So, people have to tell their children, you know, "Don't leave that darn faucet running when you walk out of the room," type of thing. This is a, the fund is a, what do you call it again? Enterprise fund. And it should stay an enterprise fund, and we should not be pulling money, I don't think, out of other general funds or anything else to pay for this, because we're going to find ourselves in a hole in the future, if we do have something go wrong. You know, it's bad enough if we have a major catastrophe, but just for day-to-day usage, we have to, with this 15% increase for the next three years, we're going to have to conserve in some way, and we're going to have to ask the people to conserve in some way. So, I like the whole thing, the way you've done with the sewer and everything. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson.
Ms. Powers, good to see you again, and thank you for rescheduling. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Just a comment on Alderman Winger, and then I have a question. On the tier system, I like the tier system, and I relate it to vehicles on the road. You and your car pay a different rate than Alderman Caddella does with his truck, who pays a different rate than the guy who drives the stake bed truck, who pays a different rate than the guy with the semi truck. And it's all based on wear and tear on the system. That the heavier the vehicle, the higher you should pay in the fee, and this is kind of similar. And it gives a break to the seniors besides. But getting to my question, the people that are getting billed their gallons, they're actually subsidizing the unallocated unbilled water as well, are they not?
Well, they were to a certain extent. Where we did find actual errors between the reading device and the meter, we did backbill those customers to the extent that we are allowed by law. So, some of that has been recouped. I guess you could say, like anything else, everybody ends up paying for the mistakes of the few. And in the Water Fund, probably the best example I have of that is our same 23 delinquent accounts that tell us the same story every month, and just squeak in before they get shut off, and they do the same thing every single month. And all these good ratepayers who pay their bill on time have subsidized that group of people forever. And that's true of all businesses. You have, you know, you have your group of people who aren't going to follow the rules and regulations. Alderman Chark, you just mentioned the people who leave faucets running. How about all the people who know they have a leaky toilet, when our water people tell them they have a leaky toilet and need to get a plumber and refuse to fix it? This happens all the time. So, yeah, I guess the many do pay for the, for the mistakes of the few, and I don't know what you could do as a council or anybody could do to completely stop that. We knew when we saw the, you know, 69%, 72% being billed out of what was being pumped, that there was a problem. But it was, it was so complicated, it took a long time to run all, run down all the various contributory factors. And I think now, the city's on a pretty good path here to get meters replaced. You know, they know where the old meters are. The Water Department knows that. And as monies become available, they're getting those meters changed out. The new software allows us to see consumption patterns more quickly. That helps a great deal. So, it's a group effort to make it happen.
I wasn't going specifically after people not paying, although that's a separate problem. Did I understand correctly, there was 31% of the water that we're paying for from the Water Commission is lost in the system, and now we're down to 12% is lost in the system?
Yes, pretty much that's it.
And that's the thrust of my question. I was going to suggest, Alderman Winger, at a future Public Works Committee, that we talk about that, and what we're doing to lower that rate and to get closer to 100% billing. If there's leakage in the system, we should prob...
No, we've done that. We've done the leak study, and we've found the leaks, and those have been fixed. You'll never get 100%, because the municipal water usage is part of that unbilled, okay? The water that the fire department uses for hydrant flushing is unbilled. You're always going to have an unbilled portion.
Is that 12% an acceptable figure, or is that still high?
Oh, yes. That's why I said, if we could get to, we can get to 90, everybody will be happy, because 90 is golden. No, you wouldn't get any higher than that. And that's why we reported to this council at least twice, if not three times, over the last two years, the various, the various things we were trying to do to run these down, because we knew it wasn't one simple answer. And it did turn out to have to be a cooperative effort between Finance and the Water Department, and it involved an awful lot of people. But now that I've seen the percentage come up, I feel better that we've, you know, we found the leaks and literally plugged them. We've discovered the customers that were deactivated or had the wrong address or had something wrong. We've changed out meters where we needed to do so, and we've backbilled customers that should have been billed right along. So, all those efforts have paid off now.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor in that. I like the tiered system. I think, I think it works. I don't, I don't see that it penalizes the large family, but I see that it encourages, promotes, and even rewards conservation. I don't think I like the fixed sewer rate. I used to own a home in Wood Dale that had a well, but it was tapped on a city sewer. And my utility bill was higher than my house that I was using both sewer and water at. So, I think personally, in my household of just me, I probably use less than 3,000 gallons a month, and I don't want to say that I would do this just for me, but there may be others that may not use that 7,000 to 8,000, wherever the breakpoint is with, with what you're, with what you're proposing for a, for a set fee. So, I don't think that that's entirely fair, and it's no secret that I feel this way, because I've talked about it... And it's no secret that I feel this way because I've talked about it before. I think that as far as irrigation goes, yeah, it's unfortunate that the system is set up that, you know, that water goes into the ground that people get charged for. But I've, I've mentioned this many times. I mean, I'm very much in favor of bringing back wells just for irrigation. There's, there's a lot of free water in our ground. And I think we're, I think we're wasting good potable water by, by watering our lawns. I, I think maybe a little, a little bit of a different direction and maybe not a finance issue, but I think something that can ultimately, you know, result in, in the same, you know, in the same finale, which is people are willing to pay upfront to, to get a well if it ever becomes a legal situation to do. I think that could resolve that portion of the problem.
Go ahead, Brett.
One quick point, if I could jump back to Alderman Winger for a brief moment. You know, these tiers that we put in here were what we came up with just to, to do our, our best to stratify the population. If we feel that, you know, the larger families are going to be at 12,000 and you'd like to see it bumped out to 15 and then 40, I mean, we can play around with those. This was just the, the best fit that we got in here, the, the first go around with it. To your question about the wells, Alderman Winger, I mean, currently, the city code does not allow, you know, I mean, we've had people who've come on due to annexation that have said, "Hey, can I just run irrigation off of this?" And we've had to tell them no and had to get it capped off. I know there are a number of communities in the Chicagoland area that do allow that to happen. Most, however, don't allow you to drill a new well for that purpose. But if you come off of a well or if you have a cap one that you can reactivate, then you could do that. But not a new service, but existing service you could reactivate or, or transition over.
Mr. Coles.
I have a question. All right. People that had sprinkler systems that were put in before we put in the code where you could get a separate meter for the system, they've always paid the sewer rate. Myself, I had my system put in in '85 and that just has a vacuum system where it's hooked up to the thing. And it, every time I use it, as we went through one bill where it was 400, 400, I don't know how many gallons, 40,000 gallons, I guess, one summer, and I paid the sewer rate, whatever it was. Now, my system does not, is hooked up that I pay through the sewer system. Now, the new ones who later have the outside meters, their su, systems are not hooked up to the sewer. So they get a special rate on the water, which I, I think they do, but I ain't sure.
Alderman Coles, they don't get a special rate on their water, but they don't get charged for sewer-
They don't get charged for the sewer.
Because they have that irrigation meter that's separate.
Yeah, it's separate.
And the way that's coded, there's no sewer charge attached to it.
Well, it wasn't that when the earlier ones were installed, and there's plenty of systems that are in, in the ground here in, in Wooddale that were put in before we put in that special meter, having a special meter. So-
And-
Anything that comes up now has a special meter, but the older, still paid through the sewer system.
And that's why we came up with this flat rate so that it just applies every month. I mean, you, if you keep tying it to, to water usage, you end up with a situation such as you described. And then you also have people who may leave and go on, maybe leave their home for a month and then they don't want to pay for sewer because they claim they didn't use any water.
Well-
Well, the sewer, the sewer is still there.
I think-
I mean, the, the system needs to be supported financially. It's in the ground. It's there and operating.
I think you've done a wonderful job on this and I think it should be accepted by everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Police.
Maggie, I got a question, just to make sure I understand this. Unlike Alderman Caddell, I'm in tier three probably, maybe going higher. So from 7,000 to 10,000, that's 3,000 gallons, basically it's going to cost me another 45 cents because we're looking at 15 cents per thousand, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if I use another 3,000 on top of that, it's another 30 cents. So-
Did you just figure?
So if, basically if I go up to 13,000 gallons, I'd be paying, what, 75 cents extra on my bill if we went to the tier system, right? Is that what we're saying here?
Mr. Wilson is doing those calculations.
Yeah, just making sure my math is right. And as far as the, the sewer rate, the $53, that was the flat rate for residential. But again, that can be adjusted, that number for residential.
Sure. And the, the commercial, we've always had some difference. There was a time in Wooddale when, I think there were over 60 sewer rates. Virtually every business had its own rate. And three years ago, when we came up with the, the increased recommendations, we decided that those did not make any sense, that we knew we had light industry, we knew we had restaurant or food service. They do, they do create more wastewater of a different type that requires more treatment. It made sense to have a differentiation in their rates. And we have one customer, because it's a trailer park, that has a rate that needs to be calculated because some of the properties are on one meter and others have individual. So we, you know, we had to make a few accommodations, but basically we're trying to simplify this and make it as fair, or equitable maybe, as it can be.
Yeah, Alderman Police, assuming you were to go to 20,000 gallons in a given month, from 7,000 to 10,000 would be an extra 45 cents and from 10,000 to 20,000 would be an extra dollar.
That's what I figured.
Above that base rate of the, up to 7,000 gallons. So looking at a dollar 45 above the base 7,000 rate.
Yeah. And one other statement. As far as the sewer rates go, I mean, naturally, you're talking about industrial, the restaurants and all that. I mean, we don't want to get out of control here where the restaurants all of a sudden say, "Man, I can't even wash my dishes here," or whatnot. They're going to, you know, we don't want to deter the businesses and just hammer away at them. So, I mean, everything here, we can adjust or whatnot.
Well, and theirs would still be based on their water usage the way it is right now. So there, we're talking about a little bigger percentage increases, but it would be applied the same way that it always has been. And we did that purposely because, you're right, you don't want to hammer a business out of existence. We're trying to, trying to come up with something that makes sense here and, and represents what truly is happening as far as the usage or the impact, as the mayor said, on the system. Who's, who's impacting it more?
Thank you.
Alderman Schardt.
Just maybe to sum it up kind of, I, my, my wife and I have a small garden next to the driveway and it's the mayor's fault. He got me interested in this conservation thing. And I looked into water barrels, the ones you put down below the drain pipe from the gutters, and I put one in last weekend, I think I finished putting it in. And I've already had three calls from citizens, "How'd you do that? Where'd you get that thing?" Now, just to let them know, the landscapers sell them for about 110 to $160 for the barrels, plastic barrels. I went to the U.S. Department of Agriculture and a place in St. Charles, a department of the agriculture over there, has them for $70 each. And they already have the connections for hoses, for the drain hose, for the overflow hose and everything else, and the screen on top so the mosquitoes don't go into it. So I put that in and I had three residents that already, one stopped and talked to me and two of them saw it and called me. And I gave them that phone number and they're intending to go out and buy those barrels so they can cons, conserve the water and use that rainwater for their plants, for the flowers. Now, it's not always possible to do that. I mean, if you've got an area this big, as big as this room with flowers, of course that won't work. But I think for a lot of people, it might. And the reason I really got the idea is because there are about six or seven people in Wooddale already who had rain barrels. And after looking it up and as I drove by and noticed them and I said, "You know, that really is a good idea." I have one question. The, one has the sump pump going into the rain barrel. I don't see any problem with that. I wouldn't think there's a problem with it. Matter of fact, it's probably a good idea if it's possible to. Because he's got an elbow going up and back down into the rain barrel as well as his, his downspout. So he, he's really conserving the water that, you know, that otherwise would be wasted and go down the sewers. So, thank you. That's it. If anybody wants that number though, for the agriculture department, they can either email me or call me and I'd be happy to give it to them and they can get their rain barrel for 70 bucks.
All right, now I'll ask my question. I'm over the 20,000, I guarantee that in my household, or else I won't be taking anywhere showers. Question for you. Maggie, the concern I have with this is, do we, could we put a, a industrial use in this plan or that? I know you go over 20,000, but is there a way that we could up that if, because you said we have several businesses in town use well over 20,000.
Well, as, as Mr. Wilson said, you could add another, you could alter these tiers in terms of gallons and you could add a tier. You could say anything over 50,000 is going to be another rate for water. We've already adjusted for the sewer portion of this.
Right.
But yeah, you could, you could do that if you wanted to. And I think now, probably those customers could be identified and you'd know exactly who they were and, or at least how many there were, who were those big users. As I mentioned, the two hotels, you're always going to have that. A medical building, medical or dental building will have a lot of usage even though they may not have a lot of square footage. Restaurants, we know, use a great deal of water. But small, tiny, tiny stores, they don't even use as much water as a household uses. You know, I mean, we have, we have some commercial users that probably use 3,000 gallons or less a month. You know, they, because what do they have? Maybe a sink and a toilet. That's all they have in, as far as using, using water. So this wasn't, this wasn't designed strictly for residential, although clearly if, if residential users don't begin to conserve water, you know, the largest number, we're just going to keep having these same problems on the planet. At least, that's how I read the interest of the council on trying to encourage conservation. So we want to get the largest number of customers to begin thinking about conserving. By the same token though, businesses, well, businesses react differently. If things cost more, if a commodity costs more, they try to find ways to use less of it. So it could even be that businesses would try to conserve more based on these rates. I don't know that, but I mean, we're, aren't we doing, we're seeing the same thing with gasoline right now, where people are using public transportation, we're cutting out some of the trips that they'd make in their cars and we've already had some reduction in total gasoline usage in this country. So I, I think, I think if these things are planned correctly and communicated correctly, people will understand it's, it's to the benefit of the planet and their pocketbook at the same time.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that presentation. Obviously, it's something that we got to take up in future meetings. See, Mayor, should I have something to say?
Based upon, I'm, I'm just confirming the direction that the council wants the staff to go with this, with this, with respect to the presentation tonight and with respect to the comments that I've heard from the aldermen. My sense of direction to the staff is to go ahead and prepare an ordinance which enacts this. And from the conversation and comments made tonight, my sense of direction with respect to the tiered versus the non-tiered is that you want to go in the direction of a tiered system. And with respect to a flat fee for sewer as opposed to a, tying it to the water usage, the direction I've heard tonight, or the comments I've heard tonight indicate that you want to go, continue to go in the direction of a flat fee. So unless there, that's not what I've heard, the direction that we will give to our city attorney will be to, to prepare an ordinance that enacts these water rate increases and sewer rate increases with, as pretty much status quo is presented by the finance staff.
Mr. Dean Winger.
I agree with, Mr. Manager, that it would be good to give them a direction on where to take this next. So, so I certainly agree and I appreciate you for bringing that up. And, and if we are going to give that direction, Chairman, I would prefer that we do a vote on this because I want to be able to voice my opinion on, on a no. I want to be able to say no. And, and, and secondly, just a point, that if I'm reading the literature correct that's put in front of us tonight, 37% of residential households use 20,000, over 20,000 gallons. Is that correct? Am I reading this correctly or no?
37% of all users. Those would almost all be commercial industrial. Not residential. This is a, this is a plan for all utility customers.
Okay. But it's 37% that of all Wooddale structures or businesses and residential use 20,000 or more. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess we, I guess we could take the vote on Caddell.
If we're going to vote, can we split it into two pieces?
Well, that's, that's what I think I-
The tier on each sewer and water.
Right. Because I think there's mixed, the feeling that I got tonight here is, I, impression that everyone's pretty much in favor of the tier, but I don't think everyone's in favor for this fixed sewer rate. So I, I think I would take that as two motions. So, Mr. Newzio.
Before we make a motion, I was wondering if we could bring this to the, our next committee meeting and have like more examples exactly what the numbers are. You know, right now I'm just seeing so much per thousand. I'm trying to do some quick math here, but, you know, I, I like the tiered system. I understand, you know, I'm in tier three. Not too excited, but as far as the, the flat fee, I mean, you know, I think we should discuss the, the fees on, on the sewer before we go, you know, I think we, this might take a, this might be a little lengthy discussion on the sewer, whatnot. I think we should maybe table this to the next committee meeting so everybody can soak this information in and maybe have some other, I, I would like to see some, some examples. You know, I used 12,500 gallons, this is what's going to cost me versus, with this system and the flat rate versus the old system. Just so, you know, it, you know, right now I'm thinking, wow, this might cost me an extra $100 a month. You know, and the people that are watching are going to think, holy smokes, people, those guys are crazy, they're going to raise my water bills. Like, man, I think we should get some kind of examples and just move it to the next committee meeting personally.
Mr. Lewton.
I think we're losing track of one thing and it's not being, hasn't been mentioned since Maggie brought it up. And that's is that you're trying to create a surplus to take care of infrastructure needs and to have a, an operating expense ratio that would go to the bonding people to create bonds for a major reconstruction. And if you change Maggie's design to give benefits to certain people in one area, you're going to have to recreate taxes on water in another area in order to compensate. This program that she has, very good program and well thought out and time spent on it, is designed to create a, a fund balance that increases to the point where your 40- to 80-year-old pipes have to be replaced in large numbers over a vast area. You have-